Welcome, everyone. I will turn it over to Dr. Sal.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here this evening. The purpose of study sessions is so that we can share information and build trust, make sure we have an exchange of ideas in order to have the most efficient decision-making at school board meetings as possible. So we have a very robust agenda and very happy to see so many people here. We'll start out with an audit review from Dennis and move into the World's Best Workforce Report. From there, we'll get an update on transportation. We'll talk a bit about co-op agreement requests that came forward. Russ Reeves shared that information. Couple policies that we'll take a look at, and then we will be going into a regular board meeting tonight to take a look at the certification of our levy. And then we do have a closed meeting after that as well for negotiations. So with that, without further ado, I'll hand it over to Julie.
Actually, I'll...
Or, why don't you take it over first, and then I'll hand it to Julie.
Just a quick review. We have a placeholder for the board agenda, the monthly review. Just generally, continue with our policies. One of our policies tonight, you'll see there's a note to change it to the MSBA language, which I'm sure we'll discuss further when we get that far. Continue to monitor the budget and enrollment. We're part of our goals is also the data review, and we'll be doing that tonight. And I'm hoping everyone's enjoying their visits in the schools. In business, Dr. Sal, those have been very beneficial. And I know there's a community engagement meeting tonight, so they're moving forward as some of our goals as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Julie.
Good evening, everyone. As you've been used to, we usually complete our audit in August and work through that. And Dennis is here. We always bring Dennis Holgaveen from Clifton Larson Allen, our auditing firm, to our board meetings for the board to review our audit. And then we'll bring a final audit for review or for approval, actually, at the October 14th board meeting. So Dennis is here to kind of go over the audit, answer any questions that you may have. And I will turn it over to Dennis.
Thanks, Julie. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me. I like the workshop sessions better, as we've talked about with the business office, because there's an opportunity to have more of a dialogue. So to the extent something comes to mind, if it's something that you're questioning, I'm guessing it's something somebody else is thinking similarly. So we don't generally have as much time to have conversations as we do at the formal board meeting, which is when?
October 14th.
October 14th. So we're actually sitting really pretty in, as it relates to the audit. So tonight, what we're going to do is go through an overview of the executive audit summary. The executive audit summary is our communication as your auditing firm to the board. So it's what we think you would find insightful, helpful in doing your oversight responsibilities. I will say, you'll notice that its draft watermark is Julie indicated, so it is subject to change. In fact, she and I had a good conversation today about some improvements that we want to make to this for the final board meeting. It's not changing any of the content, none of the data, but what we're looking for is to make this particular document more visual. What we're finding is people, there's an awful lot of numbers in here, and what we're going to do is, we're going to keep all that data, but we're going to make it more visual so that we have people that are more visual learners. And I'm going to point that out as we go through here. So to the extent something would occur to you, like, hey, I wish I would, you know, I'm a more visual person, and this is how I'd like to see that data, you know, I think we could still incorporate some of that. But I'll probably get those changes that we talked about today tomorrow. So I don't know if you want to reroute it on the draft. I mean, that's totally for your own internal processes, you know, for people to get that in people's hands before it's finalized. But, okay, so for tonight, I want to start on page one of the executive audit summary, kind of buzz through the audit results if I could. This is our intention to issue these audit reports. It'll be within the next week or so. I'm guessing we'll get it to our quality department and get everything signed off. But the main thing, of course, that you're hiring an auditing firm to do is to give an opinion on the financial statements. We intend to issue a, what's called a clean or an unmodified audit report. The district puts together a CAFER, a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is an indication of holding yourself to a higher standard than is required. By state statute, you're just required to put a financial statement together. You've chosen to put a comprehensive annual financial report together, which has a lot of historical statistical data in it, has a transmittal letter and things like that. And you've gotten the award from the ASBO Certificate of Excellence for a number of years. So the intent is that you would continue to qualify for that. And then because we're following governmental auditing standards, we have to give an opinion called the Yellow Book Letter. There's two different aspects to that Yellow Book Letter. One's a compliance report where there could be findings related from a compliance standpoint. We have none to report, though, so as far as that aspect of that Yellow Book Report, we don't have anything to report as far as compliance issues. And then same as in prior years, the internal control aspect of that same letter, we will be issuing a material weakness in internal controls because of the reliance the district is placing on Clifton Larson Allen to put together a GAAP compliant financial statement. And again, that's historically been true, and it's true of most school districts where you don't have a person who does that for you in terms of making sure you understand all the GAAP compliance requirements and disclosures and things like that. So again, I think the board's consistently been okay with that. And then because you expended more than $750,000 of federal funds, you have to have a single audit. This year, we did an audit of your special education program. We have no findings to report as part of the single audit. Last year, we had a significant deficiency to report for some cellphone allowances or something in the special ed program. But for this year, we had, it's been addressed, and there's no findings to report for this year. And then the other compliance letter that we're required to issue is based on guidance from the Office of the State Auditor. They put together a thick checklist of all the different state statutes that they want us to verify that you've adhered to or complied with. Would not be the end of the world if I had something to report. Last year, we had one finding for a lack of prompt payment of bills. Basically, you have 35 days to pay bills if you meet monthly as a school board, and we found one, I think, last year that had, well, hadn't been paid within that 35-day period. But for 2019, we have nothing to report from a legal compliance standpoint. So it's going to be a very clean audit from all these different standpoints, except for the one that we've historically reported, like I said, for relating to the drafting of the financial statements. So that's all I had. Everything else, we're going to cover as we get into the meat of the actual executive audit summary. So if you turn to page two, this is the actual outcomes of the audit results for 2019 in the general fund. Again, lots of familiar faces on the board, so I guess you've been accustomed to always drawing your attention back up to the top line of the general fund. The unassigned portion of that is where school board members typically have the most say in terms of programmatically what to do with those unassigned fund balances. You started the year at 9.3 million, which was 10.2% of expenditures, and you ended the year at 11.2%, or just short of $11 million, as you can see on that top line. Going down there on the left, non-spendable category is just an indication that you've already invested fund balance in certain elements that you can't spend it twice. So if you've invested in prepaid items or inventory, that's what that is. And then the assigned category is, the school board's given the authority to the business manager and the superintendent to come up with those assigned categories. It's a statement of intent at a point in time. It does not tie your hands as a school board in terms of a formal action like a committed fund balance would. A committed fund balance is actually, you know, requires board action to put the money into a committed fund balance and to take it out. Assigned is just a statement of an intent at a point in time, so.
Can we talk a little bit? We did add an assigned this year for the school safety, and that is because we received a grant from the Department of Ed for the safe entrance at the ALC. We hadn't been billed from that yet as of June 30th, so we had to put it as an assigned so that we knew that that's where we have to spend those dollars. So you're going to see that, and they'll go away after this year, because as you know, ALC's open, but we're still making those payments. So, sorry to interrupt.
Good, no, good. Thank you for doing that. And then the restricted category is where the state legislature attaches a string to the dollars that they give to you as a school board. So they say, we're going to give you this dollar, but you have to spend it in this way. And so that's what this is representing. I like to point out the gifted and talented line as an example. So as part of your general education aid entitlement, based on the number of kids that you serve, one element of that general education aid is gifted and talented. So by state statute, the legislature says you have to spend $125,000 on your gifted and talented program. The way we present it is indicating that you go well and above, beyond the state mandated amount by spending $282,000. So you can see where, out of the unassigned category up above, you had to, you invested $156,000 of dollars above and beyond the legislative amount to invest in your gifted and talented program. So looking at the bottom line, the total fund balance started the year at 16.3 million, had $99.35 million of, just short of 100 million. My goodness, that's just crazy how that number has gone up. The budget to actual outcome, look at how close that is. The board-approved budget for 2019 had revenues at 98.6 million. They came in at 99.35 million for a net variance of 706,000 or 0.72%. You know, 700,000 sounds like a lot, but when you express it as a percentage of the total, it's not significant at all. And most of that is in the category of state aid. I think the state aid category, if you were to look at the actual financial statement, it's about $800,000 of the variance. And of that, your general ed aid was about $130,000, as I recall, higher than what your budget had reflected. I think it's slightly higher enrollment, maybe, than what you had budgeted for. And then the rest is special ed. And most districts are seeing that their special ed funding is coming in much better than what had been planned through the budget process. And that's very typical of most school districts. You don't want to be, you want to be overly conservative in that regard because, you know, it's a statewide formula. You never exactly know what the legislature's going to fund it at. And so you're better off kind of planning for a lower number and then letting it flow through, even if it's part of the prior year under accrual.
And that's what ours. Half of that is an under accrual from the prior year.
And very common, you know, very consistent with what others.
A lot of that, and I think we've talked about it before, is because a lot of it is based on tuition. It's hard to know what that tuition is going to be that we have to budget for, and we don't really know what that is, even for last year. We won't know that final amount till March of next year. So a lot of that has to do with just kind of that process of what is that tuition and how does that affect us?
In terms of being conservative planning, this is exactly what we would want you to do. In terms of total expenditures, the board had approved a total expenditure budget of 99.4 million. You can see there in the tiny print. The actual numbers came in at 96.4 million for a net variance of $2,973, which, again, sounds like a big number, but on a $100 million organization, it's 2.99%. And digging into it further, as we'll see further into the report, you can lob of that 2.97 million, you can take 1.43 of it and know that that's like LTFM-type capital expenditure funding, that those projects just didn't get done on the timeline that might have been expected. So we close the books every year on June 30th. So anything that didn't get done that had been planned as part of the budget just flows into the next fiscal year typically. So that's 1.43 million. Salaries and benefits were under budget by .45 million, again, on 77 million or whatever it is for salaries and benefits, again, remarkably close. But you've, as a board, you've become very, very accustomed to having outcomes that are very close to what you had approved as a budget. And then site carryover was about 450,000. I think it's up in the, yeah, it's up in the assigned category for site carryover, about 450,000. That's where the allocations were given to site administrators, but they chose, you know, you don't want to have a use it or lose it kind of mentality, so you allow them to carry that over. So again, once you back out things that we know very good reasons for timing differences and things like that, the actual budget to actual outcomes are remarkably close. But again, very consistent as a board, what you've come to rely upon. Page three then are the other funds. Up at the top, you can see the food service program, started the year with a fund balance of 1.12 million, end of the year at 1.185 million for a net increase of a little bit, 70,000 or something like that. So the net revenues were within about 25,000 or 0.5%. On the expenditure side of the, you were on $211,000 under the board-approved budget, but 141,000 of that was budgeted for capital, but you only incurred about 67,000 by June 30th of 19. So I don't know how much of that you're carrying over into fiscal year 20. But again, that's what those fund balances basically for, to take pressure off your other capital needs of the district. So it has to stay within the child nutrition program, but it's great to have an available fund balance to make those investments as you build your new sites. You're growing, you know, significantly growing districts. So again, you're going to have needs as you build buildings and things like that. So very good outcome on your food service program. Community ed started the year with 1.15 million of fund balance. You can see the revenues were within 0.44% or a net variance of about 33,000. Expenditures were $57,000, $58,000 over budget or 0.74. Again, you can see from the budget outcome on the far right column, the budget, net budget variance was only 24,000, different than what the board-approved budget had reflected. So again, that was in keeping with what the board had approved in terms of the ending fund balance. But Julie and I did talk about it today, and your fiscal '20 budget, it does not have the fund balance declining any further. I think that's what I took from our conversation. So the building fund, again, that money's just sitting there waiting for those projects to occur. That was voter-approved and things like that. Debt service fund is very much consistent with what we'd expect. As you pay off your debt service costs, you're required to levy, you know, 10% more than what is actually required for that year's debt service. So it's not unusual to have a slight growth in fund balance, but there's mechanisms in place through the levy process to draw that down through the levy process if you get an excessive amount of fund balance built up. So very consistent with what we would expect. And then your OPEB revocable trust, you didn't choose to use it this year, once again. And then self-insurance is working as intended in terms of your insurance program. So keeping your rates very stable, and it's worked out very successfully for the school district. Any questions on the outcomes of the actual fund balances? Should I be consistent with what's been reported to the Department of Education already? Page four is just the five-year historical trends. The top number is in the green. It's just the total fund balance. I don't know, we maybe should be consider removing it, because total fund balance really is a meaningless measurement for the general fund, because so much of that is restricted in terms of the amount that the legislature says you have to spend in a certain way. It gives us mistaken impression, like you've got all this money sitting around, but really it has to be used for LTFM and very specific things. What you want to focus on is the unassigned fund balance. You've been very consistent in keeping that within a range, very successful as a growing school district. You know, every year, you have more resources available through the growth of the school district. And then you also had the voter-approved referendum in, what was it, December of 2017, which kicked into in fiscal 2019. So the public's been supportive of the district, and you've been very responsible in terms of dealing with the growth that you've had to do and keeping the fund balance within a very reasonable range, nothing excessive, in my opinion. Page five is reflecting the enrollment for the year. And again, the big story there for me is, you know, as someone just picking this up cold, is the success the district has had in terms of the net between open enrollment out, you know, resident and students choosing to go somewhere else versus the number of kids you're drawing in into the district. So you can see there, you had 686 opting out through open enrollment, but you had 1,100 kids, family members opting into the district. It was a very, very big success story in terms of the revenue that that generates, about 2.42% growth for the year. Page six and seven, I'm not going to get into them too much, and the reason why is because as a board, you have no, virtually no control over these numbers. These are full accrual entity-wide statements that are not reported to the Department of Ed. Gatsby a number of years ago said, you know, we need a full accrual model to be more consistent with what people see in the for-profit world or the nonprofit world. So we slammed the entire district into one column, and we depreciate your assets, capitalize them, put all your debt in here. And because of the way Gatsby implemented the standard related to the statewide pension plans, you're getting these really wild swings. You can see from 2018 to 2019, through nothing this board did, it increased from a deficit of, a net deficit of 20 million to a net positive number of just 7.5 million. It's really totally related to the pension entries and the way they give you all these years to implement changes in terms of the way the calculations relate, actuarial calculations of what the liabilities are in statewide pension plans. So you get these wild swings, so it's not really worth addressing. Unless someone has a question, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but it's not something I really want your focus to be on, like I said, because you have no control over those numbers really at all. Page eight is just looking at enrollment from a different standpoint of how many of the kids were in grade levels for kindergarten, elementary, and secondary, and things like that. But it's the same 2.42%. This is just graphing the aid entitlement for the number of kids, students that you served. Page 19 is just a five-year historical trend of your funding in the general fund. And again, we make the point there. If you look from 2018 down in the lower right corner to 2019, you know, the legislature has been providing some improved funding at about 2% on the general education formula, but in terms of the levy itself, that tax property, local property tax levy line is really just reflecting, for the most part, you know, it's other changes as well, but for the most part, it's the public-approved referendum vote that gave additional resources to the district. So, yeah. And the thing that we always used to talk about was the tax shift, and that fell off finally. The last buyback or payback was in 2014, and then that dropped off. So now we're focusing on other things. Page 10 is just looking at your general fund and divide, simply dividing the total expenditures of the general fund by the number of students that you served or average daily membership Again, I think I've made the point in the past that you've been pretty responsible. In terms of the traditional graph of any governmental entity, it's a little bit more direct up. Yours has been a little bit more restrained, I would say. 2019 did have some increase there, but, for example, I think I made the point in the text there, from 2017 to 18, the increase per student was only $12 of an increase. And again, it gets a little bit hard to make those cases, but most of the impact for 2019 would have been the fact that you had additional resources, you know, that the public gave you through the referendum, and you invested that in salaries and benefits and things, too. Page 11 is just looking at the general fund percentage of expenditures by program dimension. One of the things, this is where I can point out, one of the things we're going to do is, the text on that purple section in the middle there gets a little dark, so we're going to turn that into a white font, so it's a little more legible as an example. Page 12 is just, one of the things we're going to do is, we have too many increments on the left side of the top graph. We're going to reduce the number of, it doesn't need to be every 5 million, it gets a little crowded on that graph, so we're going to reduce the number of increments. Note at the bottom there, again, I always love pointing out, if you took the entire general fund and broke it down into the object series dimension, so you see how much you budgeted for salaries, how much for benefits, purchase services, et cetera, it really allows you to zero in on where the variances were. So as we talked about, the capital expenditure line is simply reflecting the timing differences of when projects got done. So of the variance of 2.9 million, you know, half of it relates to the timing of capital expenditures. You could take 450,000 and say that that's what site administrators carried over into the next fiscal year. But if you look at just the salaries and benefits, I think it's what I say, it's like 77 million or something almost between the two, how close it is. Again, just like to reemphasize the fact that as board members, you're getting good information. The outcomes are coming out very close to what you'd been told. You don't have the regret of what you could have or should have or would have done differently had you had different information. You're getting good information. Page 13 is just looking at a five-year historical trend of the general fund, the different categories of fund balances at the bottom there, and you can see what you've been very, very good about, recognizing that any successful school district sets aside money for the future in terms of unassigned category of fund balance. So as you add programming or add different buildings, you need fund balance to be able to invest in your programs and things like that. So it's, you're sitting in a really good spot from that standpoint of having resources available. Page 14 is the food service fund. One of the things we're going to do is, rather than hanging all this data at the top on page 14, we're going to make this a bar chart that's got total revenues, total expenditures, and ending fund balance, so it's more visual. It'll have all the data there, but it'll be a graphical depiction of that. And then one of the other things we're going to do on page 15, Julie indicated that it would be helpful to know what percentage of free, reduced, and full-price meals are these numbers. We have the numbers on the top of page 15, but to make it more meaningful and insightful to you as board members, we're going to indicate to you what percentage of those categories are. Because basically, what most districts find is that as the economy has improved, the incidence of free and reduced as a percentage of the total has gone down. So you really can't see that when you just see numbers. So we'll make that more clear by adding that to that table. Page 16 is the community service fund, and we're going to do that same thing. We're going to do a bar chart with total revenues, total expenditures, and total fund balance. But the data underlying that bar chart will be part of that. And again, I already indicated that for 2020, you've had three years of fund balance decreasing in total. That is not what the board-approved budget for fiscal '20 is reflecting currently. Even though the audits are looking backwards, I have no idea what you're doing for fiscal '20, which is why I asked Julie today. Page 17 is, this is trying to get us close to the profiles data that the Department of Education in Minnesota publishes every year. So what they do is, they publish information so that you know what the state of Minnesota averages were, the seventh county metro area average. And then for districts with an enrollment greater than 4,000 ADM, just note that the apples-to-apples column is the 2018 column in the middle there for Prior Lake Savage. And again, historically, you've had less resources available to you, so you expend less per student. What we're going to do is, we're going to add a bar chart graphically of just the general fund portion of that chart. But other than there, you've got the descriptions of the different program dimensions and things like that. But I think it's good information, it's just a, it's just a lot of numbers, you know, we need to add some graphical depiction for people that are a little bit more graphically inclined. How are we doing on time?
We're fine.
Any questions so far? Anything you want to talk about? I do want to hit on some of this other portion of the executive audit summary. You know, the last two legislative sessions, not 2019, but 2018 and 2017, virtually had very little legislative activity because nobody agreed on anything. So the legislative summary and the executive audit summary was very brief. We've had years prior to that where you've had up to five pages of summarizing all the different aspects that the legislature threw at school districts in terms of the changes they wanted to make. This year, 2019, it's just two pages indicating they didn't agree on a lot, but they did more than other years when they virtually disagreed over everything. So we've had about, what now, five years of a 2% improvement on the general ed aid formula. So hopefully, you find that helpful in terms of your budget, year-to-date budget updates and things like that, because you can read these and try and figure out how it manifests itself in the budget that the finance team is bringing to you to review. And then after that, there's an accounting update. The Gatsby is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they get to, they're a nonprofit board that gets to determine what constitutes a governmental GAAP-compliant financial statement, and they are very active. I think there's a FASB board for nonprofits, and there's a Gatsby for governmental. And I sometimes think Gatsby's trying to catch up to, you know, and I'll be retired before they catch up, but they keep throwing out a lot of new Gatsby pronouncements. And so it's job security for auditors, I think. But the two big ones are going to be Gatsby 84, starting in fiscal '20, where you, as a board, you've already adopted a resolution to bring your student activity accounts into the general fund of the school. The legislature made it a requirement that boards take student activities under board control, starting July 1st of 2019. So that's basically what Gatsby 84 is doing. I did not look to see if there were other aspects. We've talked about it as part of the entrance conference with the finance team, if there were other things that have to change. But basically, it's, the big thing is that student activities are just going to become part of the general fund. So it has to be considered in terms of the amount of information you approve as a board. All the transactions are subject to the same level of oversight as any other thing in the general fund historically has been, including, yeah. So, you know, there's going to be a prior period adjustment for next year to recognize what that beginning addition balance was. And you do have to factor in payables and things like that. It's full modified accrual. Up till now, your student activities has always been a cash basis audit, and now it'll be just part of the general fund. So you've got to take those things into account. Might require some more time and effort in your business office. So I don't know if that's been considered in terms of staffing and things like that. Gatsby 87 is the other big one that's coming down the line. That's for 2021. I think I mentioned that Gatsby 84 is for 2020, bringing in student activities. And then for the year after that, all of your leases have to be reviewed to determine if any of those need to be capitalized. So basically, what's happening is leases up till now have either been operating leases or capital leases. Operating leases are just expensed as you pay. You know, you lease a piece of equipment and then expense it. With the cap, everything basically now is going to be a capital lease. You're going to put the asset on the books, and you're going to have the debt related to that lease over time. So that'll affect that entity-wide statement that we kind of blew over, because you don't control anything aspect of that. So that's where that debt's going to go. So that could have some significance, you know, we've got... So, um, so that could have some significance, you know, um, we've got some steps here listed that, ten steps of things you can be doing a year ahead of time to start planning for implementing the, the changes for leases and things like that. So again, there shouldn't be any dull time in your business office with the things that are coming. The last section of the executive audit summary is the formal required communications. If we had had any disagreements over accounting issues or difficulties in performing our audit, we would be required to tell you that as board members. Um, nothing like that, we expect to be able to, we don't expect anything like that to be able to, have to be reported to you. To the extent anything changes, you know, we do have to go through a quality review process of our audit report before we actually formally issue it. To the extent anything is materially different than what I reviewed with you, I will point that out at the formal board presentation. I think I mentioned, anything else come to mind of things, changes that you wanted to see that we talked, did I mention? Everything that came to mind, okay. Those are the things I had marked I wanted to chat with you about. I would be more than happy to answer any questions if anybody has some for me.
Any questions from the board?
And this is more for Julie. Did we have a technical, uh, grant or something like that that happened? Will we replace all of the wireless access points, et cetera?
It's E rate.
That was E rate?
E rate dollars.
Did that show up? Where, where would that have shown up in here? Was that in the previous year?
No, that would be, no, that's in last year.
Okay, so it doesn't show up in these numbers?
Not in these numbers for this year. Had to think about that.
So the innovation of four hundred and fifty thousand in innovation, what was that earmarked for? Cause I thought that's where it was supposed to be.
Yeah, that was, I know some of it was the idea, Doc, that we did last year.
Okay. And that's carried over and that's what it looks like?
Right, we just carry over from year to year.
Any other questions?
And you, I just want to clarify, so when he talks about the unassigned fund balance, we also include assigned when we determine how, what our, um, what the board determines what their, um, fund balance is. We have always used unassigned and assigned to come for a total there. Dennis doesn't know that because I think that's an internal, um, process, but that is what we determined.
Well, what I did notice, um, is that you as a board adopt your budget and using that same format, which I did not know that until you sent it to me this year. Um, so I think as a board member, I mean, it's might, nice to have that connection between how you approved your budget and how you see it in the audit report. So that's, I don't know if I have anybody else that has done that, but I like that idea a lot.
Um, just to kind of, um, just go a little deeper on the, the G A S B change on the extra perimeter booster. And I know it's probably not for Julie, but so are we, I wonder was a transition time this, this year, right? So the groups are becoming aware of what?
They are, we've had meetings with them. We've had meetings, especially with our, um, with all our principals and all of our staff with, with their staff as far as their secretarial staff. Um, and we have had one meeting with the athletic director and, um, a lot of the, um,
Mr. Reps?
Yes, the reps.
I was going to say, cause it has to go with parents.
It's not a booster, it's not for booster clubs. It's for our internal student activities like National Honor Society. Has nothing to do with P T Cs, has nothing to do with booster clubs.
So those are all still operating?
Those are all still operating the same as they always have been. It is really just our own internal, uh, student activity reps.
Anything that has a representative group that would raise funds for students?
For students internally.
Like an official club or whatever?
Right. Like I said, the best one is National Honor Society. We have other, Student Council.
And so they weren't subject to the same detailed auditing, but now they're going?
Now they are.
Next year?
This year.
Well, what they're doing this year, okay.
This, this.
So as far as the policies and, well, the procedures established, those have been established?
They have to follow everything the same that we do anything else in the general fund. So it is becoming more difficult for them to have pizza parties and to do all of that because it's, it's not allowable. Buying gift cards isn't allowable. We used to allow that through student activity. And so they could raise funds and buy gift cards for the person who raised those funds. That's all gone, they can't do that anymore. There's a lot of the things that, that they kind of had some flexibility in student activity, whereas now they really don't. And it's, it is much more difficult for them and it's hard for them to understand because they're students and they,
Right.
So it is, it is, um, and I get it, I understand it, but that's the rulings that we have to follow, so.
Probably see a lot more, uh, schools trying to offload some of those things off to into booster and parent, parent groups. Things, so they have, they're going to get really frustrated.
That's what we're doing too.
They, they know what's coming with the audit, you know, every year. And so they know that it's subject to, anything could be selected as part of the audit. So you do have to implement some new controls, like Julie said, that haven't been done. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing.
It's not necessarily.
It's immaterial to most of your financial, you're a hundred million dollar.
Right.
Organization, so now to tuck into the student activities, it's going to be immaterial, but you're still going to have to implement some controls that weren't there previously on the off chance that it would get selected, um, as part of an audit, so.
Well, I just think from a student standpoint, you know, it's the kind of stuff public wise, like it's the kind of stuff that gets annoying and people are like, why can't we do this?
Right. And I, and that's why I said it's harder for them to understand. You know, things, other, there's a lot of different things that they'll have to comply with. You know, there isn't anything that can, like, um, like if you buy into T-shirts for National Honor Society and your rep wants a T-shirt, they have to buy it themselves. It can't be off the fundraisers that the kids raised, cause it has to only go for students. So even though that you're the, the teacher, you're the, you know, you're overseeing that program, you're getting paid to do that, and so you're not supposed to be receiving any other kind of compensation. You can't buy anything for the teachers, you can't buy any, it's just that, that's what the rules are required now. I said, it's, it's a little unfortunate because it did, it used to allow some flexibility for those things to happen and do some what I call more fun things, but that's just not possible now.
The only other thing that I'll add to that is we don't know if the Office of the State Auditor is going to be adding a checklist specifically for student activities. It wouldn't surprise me. Now, you know, when they were audited as a separate standalone thing, there were a lot of requirements that we were testing for. Now that it's buried into the general fund, it wouldn't surprise me if they put together some sort of specific checklist specifically for student activities. But it sounds like you're, you're going to, you know.
Well, we have.
Um, which is good, great for an auditor here, you know, the things that you've got planned in terms of, um, implementing changes related to that, so.
Any other questions?
Just really quick, we've had a copy in our board book that, I mean, doesn't match up page for page with the summary that you sent out.
I, I mentioned to Julie, is it the food service fund that bled over to the?
It's on page sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, we are working on that.
The page numbers don't match up. And, um, I was just wondering, um, and I know that the way it's combined is kind of, well, kind of screwy compared to the way we normally see our budget with those net position, um, things that you were saying. But I was just wondering, is, is there a, a formula behind it? Because the swings back and forth and ninety point three-five percentage change and stuff like that, even though the numbers end up the same on the bottom.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking, and see, that's the thing, I'm trying to figure out which page it was here versus here. But the title is Table A two, Changing Net Position on our, in our board book.
Oh, I was probably looking at the big.
Name is a net position, Table eight, A, A is an apple, dash two.
In which?
In which report? On, on the line. I know, there's four, there's three reports. It's the page twenty-two and.
I gave them all three reports.
Oh, you did?
I did, I'm sorry, yeah.
So which, first one? I didn't bring, um, any of those other reports with me, but, um.
You know, I can highlight it and send it in later.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
The only thing I noticed in this particular report is when it got printed in hard copy, this bled over. You know, it was on the bottom of this page, so your page numbers from there after would have been off by one. I didn't realize that until the production team handed them to me.
I'm trying to figure out which one this is. Yeah, it's this one, but I can send it in later.
Okay, thank you. If there isn't anything else, I will let you get on with your meeting.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it. We'll see you again, uh, in a couple of weeks.
Can I just add that I just want to, um, thank my staff. I mean, we do, we're one of the audits that happens first. I do think it's helpful for our district when we know exactly what that audit, those audit numbers are coming in the beginning of the year, you kind of know where we're at. What we've done in the, you know, in the past is always presented now. And so I just want to thank my staff for all the work that they've done for this audit. It, it does take up a lot of their time and it's right in the middle of the summer, so, um, I just want to thank them.
You too, Julie, yeah, right?
Okay, well, on the world's best workforce, um, the district plan, Reimagine Minnesota had a review.
All right, as Chris Lynn Goodman is coming up here, I'm just going to do a short introduction. I know, uh, since we hired her this summer, she's been very busy making the rounds at the site meeting with staff and administrators and I know has met many of you. One of the things that we do annually is the world's best workforce report. And so we're going to, we're, we're wrapping in or kind of pulling some of those summary statements we had this last spring with Reimagine Minnesota, some of those other components and putting it together on world's best workforce. So number one, it's to give an overall, uh, presentation on some of the data components from E S A as well as, you know, go into a, try to tie some of those connections together with some of the programs uh, that we've given, uh, updates to on the board. And then tonight is just discussion. And then, uh, the next meeting on October fourteenth will be, uh, just world's best workforce review, that part of short update and then seeking board approval. So with that, Chris Lynn has really, uh, taken control of this project and this process. And so I'm going to turn it over to her.
All right, thanks so much, everybody. Director Schimmick, sorry, I can't remember all the form of protocol and board of directors and.
You're fine, you're fine.
You're doing just fine. I would ask though that the board maybe let Chris Lynn finish her presentation before we ask questions. And I know that she did spend some time with board members that were able to come in earlier and, um, got a chance to ask questions and clarify things. So with that, I'll go forward with you.
Super. Okay, so, uh, tonight in this report, we're going to look at, uh, a few different things. I'm first going to give you an E S A overview to orient you to what we're looking at a little bit more closely. We'll touch a little bit on the strategic directions of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools and Reimagine Minnesota, and then really get to some more of the world's best workforce summary data. So we'll first start with an E S A overview. Um, E S A is short form for the Every Student Succeeds Act. Uh, you might remember No Child Left Behind. Um, E S A is, um, what followed on from that. In Minnesota, we have what's called North Star as a way to measure that. Um, and North Star is used to identify different schools for support or districts for support. Um, the identification process happens every three years, so that already happened in two thousand eighteen. The next time it will happen is two thousand twenty-one, so there are no schools identified this year. And, um, it also uses a three-year average. And so there's some different, um, bars that schools, um, have to reach, um, to not be identified. Uh, and so we'll just start from there. Um, the North Star, um, process looks at first of all academic achievement. So you're familiar with that from M C A scores. It's just looking at the percentage of students proficient. Um, then it looks at progress. So you may be used to hear about growth. Um, and now, uh, that is actually quite a complicated, um, mathematical calculation. And so to make things more simple, straightforward, we look at growth, uh, sorry, we look at progress. We're looking at how students did one year and then how they did the following year. And we also look at progress for our English language learners. Uh, we then look at graduation rates at our four-year rates. And we're looking for consistent attendance. So consistent attendance is defined as students attending ninety percent of the school year or more. All right, we'll start with our academic achievement. So, um, as you remember from a memo that you received shortly after the scores were made public, we've, uh, seen some declines in, over the last three years in our M C A scores and math and reading combined as the district. Um, I want to also ground us a little bit in our enrollment. So as we go through and, uh, look at different, um, aspects of progress and achievement, we have an idea of the students that are taking these exams. So about eighty percent of our students are white. Um, about one percent of our students are American Indian, then around five percent, um, each are Asian, black, Hispanic and multiracial. Um, the, um, E S A and North Star also take into account, um, the gaps between different groups. So not only, uh, race and ethnicity groups, but, um, populations of English language learners, special ed and students receiving free and reduced price meals. And those are about three percent English language learners in our district and about twelve percent each in special ed and students receiving free and reduced price lunch. Okay, I know this looks a bit like pickup sticks, um, but I, like I said, um, E S A and North Star are looking at, um, different student groups achievement. And so, um, here it illustrates that in math, our Asian and white students are, um, outperforming our other student groups. And then, um, in reading, uh, that's, uh, similar as well as our, um, multiracial students , um, outperforming some other groups, just to give you a better idea of like where the gaps are and, um, how they look. All right, moving on toward, um, making progress toward English language proficiency and academic progress. Um, about a hundred, or not about, exactly, a hundred and sixty-seven English learners were tested on the W H I D A access. And, um, the results that you see and that are measured by North Star are called, um, a progress toward target. And so there is an algorithm and a target is set for students. And the, um, number that is then used is the amount of progress on average made toward that target. So in, um, Prior Lake, about, um, on average, students made about seventy percent, um, progress toward their targets. And we outperformed the state by nearly ten percentage points there. Uh, then, uh, as I was saying, we used to talk about growth, which had a very complicated calculation that would give us if a student, uh, was like a low, medium or, or high growth. Uh, we now look at progress, which is, uh, much easier to understand in my view. So, uh, it's made into a matrix. Um, the vertical, um, tells us about the prior year's score. So a student was either at one of these four achievement levels, did not meet the standard, was partially meets the standard, and then the two categories where a student's considered proficient is meets the standard and exceeds the standard. And we look at that, uh, compared to how they did this year using those same, um, different achievement levels. So, um, I'm going to give you an example. So, uh, this shows that, um, last year, there were, uh, two hundred and nine students who did not meet the standard and this year, uh, and also this year did not meet that standard. Um, last year, there were sixty-six students who didn't meet the standard, but are partially meeting it this year. And there were two students who didn't meet the standard last year, but met it this year. So, uh, we are always looking for progress toward the right because we want students to have, uh, improved over the past year. And, uh, the darker the color, the more students are in that group. So you'll see, um, as I pull that up, the darker color. And then there's the darkest blue where the highest concentration of students are. Uh, met standards last year and again, met it this year. And expand that out, um, to the exceed standards, um, a high number of students exceeded standards last year and also again this year. Um, M D E makes a really complicated, um, average of averages. It averages, um, math and reading together for each individual student from each school. Um, it's a really complicated number and I just wanted you to be aware of that cause you may see that in some reporting. Uh, but the Minnesota report, and we get like more points, the, uh, more a student has improved over the year. Uh, but for our reporting purposes and the Minnesota report, however, we just want to focus on students, um, improving on their achievement level over the prior year. And this right here is, um, math for the entire district. Looking at, uh, where students were last year, where they moved to this year. And we can look at that for reading and you can see the difference where, uh, there's a high concentration of students who stayed in meets and exceeds in, uh, math. And like that is really concentrated, uh, for students who met the standards last year and met them again in reading, um, higher in math. All right, uh, graduation rates is another aspect of the, um, E S A North Star, uh, system. And so we look at the four-year graduation rate. So right here, we're looking at the Prior Lake High School graduation rate over four years. So, um, that decreased just by one percentage point. So, um, it's, uh, still on a, on a pretty steady upward trend. Um, and then I also took, um, the graduation rate for all of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. So not just the high school, but any student who's involved in a Prior Lake, uh, program and put that up over the four years, you can see that trend too. Exactly, so Bridges is included and it's not Bridges alone, but Bridges and Prior Lake. And then, um, with that, um, of all. And then with that, of all of the students graduating in four years, I broke down that by student group. And if you remember back to our enrollment slide, about eighty percent of our students are white and about five percent of our students are in these other racial categories. So you can see that gap too is at least ten percentage points between Asian and white students and other students. All right, ESSA-North Star, as I said, identifies different schools or districts on a three-year basis. We did have one school identified, which was Bridges, that was identified in 2018 based on that four-year graduation rate. And I, so that threshold that they're asked to meet or exceed is sixty-seven percent. And Bridges is about fifty-two or fifty-four. However, Bridges isn't necessarily, there might be students that are involved in the Bridges program who are graduating later, maybe with an IEP or maybe for many other different reasons, but that their seven-year graduation rate. The other measure to look at is about seventy-four percent of students graduating there. So that is great. All right, our last measure for ESSA is consistent attendance. So looking at students who attended ninety percent of the school year or more, Parlex Savage Area Schools is really close to eighty-nine percent of the students attending, and that's above the state average of eighty-five percent. All right, so in summary, that is our North Star report. That's how the state looks at achievement reporting. So I will quickly dig, dive into our strategic directions. We measure the strategic directions with the scorecard. The scorecard you will see at a later date with some revisions and updates. And the scorecard measures many aspects of the things that we do in our schools and in the school district in general. But one aspect I wanted to bring forward is some of the things that are maybe a bit harder to measure. And that's like how students are doing and what they think of their experiences here. And so I took the liberty of doing some interviews with students this summer, and I'd like to share that with you this evening. Possibly with sound.
That'd be ideal.
Oh, the whole slide show?
I think our boardroom side is on. Can you adjust the sound from that panel back there, Kevin?
In the meantime, you could take this opportunity to discuss with a neighbor some of the information that you just received and like what might be new information to you, what confirms some assumptions that you already have. Okay. Okay, we will make sure that we get that sent out to you so that you can enjoy that. Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry for the technical difficulty. I'm excited to send that out so you can view that. All right, Reimagine Minnesota is another area that we have some common goals with. One of those is see all with welcoming classrooms, schools, and communities. You would have heard a little bit from some students right there, which would have been a great sign, which you will see at home. Serve all around personalized education, which we are deeply invested in with personalized learning here in Parlex Savage Area Schools. And support all about equitable resources. And that comes into play especially with our multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS audit that we just had this past year, which is really about making sure that resources are allocated as equitably as possible to make sure that all students can learn. And so I just brought up the Laker Learning Compass. That is part of what informs our personalized learning plan here. It ties directly to strategic direction number one. And there it is, which you can read. But that personalized learning and student engagement are right there in the very wording. You are familiar with the operational plan and priority work. And all of these elements really fit into the work that we do toward the goals of Reimagine Minnesota and the World's Best Workforce. And just a quick reminder, if you're not already familiar with personalized learning, to let you know a little bit more about what that is, we're really focusing on deep mastery of standards and outcomes for students. We're interested in building relationships with students and having some really high-quality assessment practices so that what teachers are assessing in the classroom relates directly to state standards so that students are, or teachers are well-informed and students as well are well-informed of their progress toward those achieving those standards. As I mentioned, we have the multi-tiered systems of support audit that just happened. And so over the next five years, we have a plan for implementing those recommendations, many of them actually being implemented right now and this year. And then some of those more deeply over time. All right, and now on to the World's Best Workforce Report. The World's Best Workforce Report is something that MDE requires, and it really builds on itself. So the measures there that start with students being ready for kindergarten is then the basis for students reading at a third grade re-level, reading level by third grade. And reducing gaps also that goes right on toward all students being college and career-ready, and then of course graduating. So I also put in some different comparison districts so that we can see what our results in Parlex Savage Area Schools are like compared to other districts. They're listed here. These districts are within, are within the metro area, have similar total enrollments to us and are within five percentage points of students receiving specialized services, English language learners, students receiving free and reduced-priced meals, and then similar ratios of students of color in the districts. Two districts there that you see on top, La Zeta and Edina, have slightly more students of color than does Parlex Savage Area Schools. Those are great comparisons because they're districts that are performing at a high level, which is what we want to be doing as well. All right, so the all children ready for school, these, the measure that we're using for this is the kindergarten benchmark that students take as they enter kindergarten. And then we're looking at how students who were involved in Circle of Friends do at that kindergarten level. We don't yet have that data because we just got it Friday. And so that will come out to you as it is collated and produced. But we can look at students reading at grade level at third grade. And so you see that line on top, the blue one. So although you see a little bit of variation, overall, it's holding steady in the, around sixty-five percent of students being proficient. That is above Minnesota's average. Of course, we want that to be even higher. So we want our students to achieve really high levels. We know they're capable of that. I then used third-grade reading, or sorry, this is math, for the entire district to look at some of the gaps that are closing or not closing. And you can see the performance of students who are receiving free reduced-price meals on the bottom in blue compared to their counterparts not receiving free reduced-price meals. So that gap is illustrated by the space between those two lines. And then using math again, and these numbers are similar for reading, looking at the gap between students of color and white students in math again over time, as well as students on IEP, so students receiving special education services compared to those who do not, as well as students receiving English language services compared to those who do not. The next aspect of the World's Best Workforce is looking at students being ready for career and college. And in Parlex Savage Area Schools, we have many different ways that we help support students to be prepared for career and college. There are some logos here of some of our programs, like Bridges and MinCaps right in the district. We have some programs where students are taking classes and earning credit at Normandale Community College while they're in school. We have AP classes. Students might take the ASFAB, a test as they might be interested in going to the military, and some college and the schools courses that are affiliated with the University of Minnesota. One way to look at college and career readiness besides just program involvement is to look at ACT scores. And so over the last three years, we have had an incredibly stable ACT score average of twenty-two point eight. And we've got a current goal of an ACT score of twenty-five. Looking then at breakdown by race, ethnicity of students and their ACT scores, we see some similar aspects to what we saw with the graduation rate before. And then, like I was saying, another aspect to look at for being college and career-ready is not only program offerings, but then who's taking or who's being, who's involved in these programs. The lighter bar on top is the percentage of students who are enrolled. So this is straight-up enrollment in our school. And then the percentage of students in AP classes is the bar on the bottom. So when you see the light bar going further out than the dark bar, that means that group of students is, has a higher representation. And the other way around, we've got a lower representation. So we're not too far off, but we do have a couple places where we think we could make some improvements. Yet another measure of being college and career-ready can come from our ACT, or from our MCA scores. If a student in tenth grade scores above a ten forty-seven, they do not need to take developmental courses. That means remedial courses before they can take credit-bearing courses at our local community colleges and Minnesota State colleges and universities. So if we look at our MCA math scores, about sixty-nine percent scored at the proficiency rate. That's eleven fifty. And so a few more would be eligible to not have to take those developmental classes. And in reading, students scored about fifty-nine percent of students were scoring proficient. And so a little more than that, so just over sixty percent would not need to take any developmental education courses as they went on. Again, you've seen that graduation rate. That's our last aspect of the World's Best Workforce, and that is a slide already familiar to you. I will point out that this slide has up to twenty eighteen as the graduation rate, clearly to September, and we had a class graduate already. But the way that the numbers are reported is that any student who finishes the requirements over the summer can still be reported into that graduation rate. And so those aren't officially released until, at the very earliest, February. Last year, they weren't released until April, when those come out, you'll receive that report too. And then these are the comparisons of high schools in the districts that are similar to us so that you could see what our graduation rate looks like compared to similar high schools. And with that, there are many different actions that we take to improve what we do in our schools. We have the school continuous improvement plans. We've updated those this year. Really cognizant of what our current reality is and knowing what our desired future is, we want to do some things different to make sure that that desired future happens instead of repeating our current reality. So the skip goals look different than you might have seen in the past. They're now focused around students achieving eighty percent proficiency by the year twenty twenty-two. And then schools have incremental steps for different groups to reach that. There's a high school graduation rate goal, a student engagement goal, as well as a recycling goal for your Eastham district. The skip goals look a little bit like this with the eighty percentage, eighty percent proficiency rate, the goal by twenty twenty-two, and then targets for each group to meet year-on-year until that point. The process this year has also changed, so the skip goals are established, as you just saw. But then principals and their belts went through a work-cause analysis process where they identified a problem in their school and then listed possible causes for that. I then worked with principals to help find out some of the data and give some facts to that so that as a team, they could either accept or reject those ideas about what the problem was. That root cause analysis, or that root cause then that was identified, was formed part of the rationale for the skip plan. And that rationale leads then to the action planning that sets out month by month and week by week what steps schools and teaching teams take as progress toward that goal. It also gives them a chance to progress monitor what's happening and go, keep continuous returning to that root cause and see if progress is being made on that or not to inform different steps that should be taken or to continue on with what they are doing. In that rationale, I included not just the desired future-related change, but really an analysis of the problem and details of the problem. And the most important part to me was how the solution addresses the problem to really make this a living document that people can return to throughout the year. Part of that action planning includes professional learning that will happen around the solution to the problem. And here is the, some of the differences between what might be professional development and professional learning. We're of course focused on that professional learning. We want it to be targeted and based on the needs of teachers. We want that to be individualized, just like personalized learning for all of our students, something that's sustained and supported, that ties in really well with the idea of progress monitoring and making sure that what we're doing is making a difference, and then changing course if it's not, and consistently monitored and assessed. The goals that learning teams and teachers make in their schools are also aligned to our district strategic directions. So this graphic is just to illustrate that, you know, we have our district strategic directions, and then we have our skip plans at all the individual schools, which feed into that. And then learning teams have their goals and individual students have, or teachers have theirs, which all align. And so all boats are rowing in the same direction there. I also have a few other slides because I know there was some interest in some specific programs. One of those was Laola Delago. Here are some MCA results from Laola Delago over the past two years, where both third and fourth graders took the MCA. So in green here is third grade and purple is fourth grade. And then the light pink is twenty eighteen and the dark pink is twenty nineteen. So this was third grade in twenty eighteen. Those students were then fourth graders in twenty nineteen. So if you want to see progress from one, of one class, you would compare this column here to this column. And then if you combine third and fourth grade, that's the school score overall that you would see in the Minnesota report card. I compare that to Parlex Savage Area Schools elementaries in general and then to the state. So you can see some real progress there. I then took a number of different language immersion programs, not necessarily just Spanish because what we're looking at is a language immersion program regardless of the language especially. In this case, I was looking for schools that were the most demographically similar again. And so the same, those same columns are there. So if we want to see third grade and how they progressed into fourth grade, that's happening here. And then third and fourth grade together, which made up the school score. So Laola Delago, well, in the MinCap there. Okay, then looking at math, so the same setup again. This was third grade and those third graders to fourth graders right there. And then the two grade levels combined right here. And that's compared to Parlex. And that's compared to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools overall average and Minnesota's estate, and then the same comparison schools there. All right, then, remember progress that we talked about earlier? I thought that might be an interesting one to bring up here, too, because remember, we're trying to go up and to the right. We want to see students moving from one achievement level to the next, and overall, that definitely happened. We had many students moving up into, from does not meet or even partially meets into meets, more so than this district overall. And a similar story in math, but maybe not quite as extreme. All right, there are also some inquiry into Sage Academy, and so I separated those results out for math. So there were a hundred and sixteen students tested, and they were one hundred percent proficient, and eighty-six of the students scored, and that exceeds level. So there are two proficiency levels, one meets and one exceeds. And a similar story in reading, with a hundred and sixteen students testing, all of them proficient, and seventy-five percent of them exceeding standards there. All right, so some highlights and areas for growth in summary, which I'm sure people would be happy to hear when we say that word. So there's some disproportionality in achievement that we want to address and notice in our results. In student achievement, I will be interviewing high school students who, some who took the MCA and some who did not, to find out more about why about eighty percent of our students took the MCA in reading in 10th grade and about seventy-five percent of students who we would expect to take it, took it in 11th grade. So there might be some things we can learn about that to make testing more attractive to students. We'll also be piloting a math screener in grades K-one and two. So we currently have a reading screener called Ames Web, Ames Web Plus for literacy, and we'll be looking at what that might look like in math to give teachers some data about where students are and how they're progressing throughout the year. In general, that links really well to increasing data literacy in general of everyone in the district, and that leads right into that MTSS audit that I talked about earlier and some of the changes that we'll be implementing this year and over the next five years, including some program reviews to find out more about the whys behind different scores and how different programs are doing. You know, kudos to that graduation rate for the Prior Lake High School for four-year. We want to keep that up and just continuing on with that. The other aspect of that is really being worked on, on the achievement side, is definitely the personalized learning. So there's professional learning going on for teachers, where they're taking some time to reflect on their own strengths and areas for growth, and we'll be able to tailor some of our professional learning to them that way. As far as the student experience goes, also part of the MTSS audit has led us to be examining some social emotional screeners for students. There is, and also that personalized learning really ties in not just to the academic side, but to the student experience side as well. And we've already been working with Sharaki Hawley and some culturally linguistically responsive strategies over the past number of years, which we're continuing on this All right, that is it. Thank you so much. Are there any questions I can take?
Lots of information.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mary?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for coming to our district. This has been, I felt that this presentation, as well as the one that you did to each one of us individually, was very enlightening, and the data is very helpful, and the more we can dive down into it, the better we're going to understand where we can improve, where we're doing well, et cetera. So thank you very, very much. There were a couple of slides that were in, and first of all, is what you showed to board members, is that going to be available to the public or no?
This is part of the board packet, and it, that is public data. Everything I showed is public data.
Okay, so what we saw before here in-
The screencast.
The screencast.
Oh, the screencast. Like, all of that is also publicly available data.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know if that was going to be available with this to the public when, now that our-
Hadn't planned on it, like, that is, that was made as extra supplementary material, but again, it is all available publicly.
Okay, thank you. You know, when we were going through this and you compared it to Minnesota, there was one slide that you added on before you went into skip, and that was after the, all students graduate, you also did a comparison with those same schools on math as well as on reading.
Okay.
But it's not in the one that you're showing here, it was only in the one that I saw right before this.
Okay, like, that might just be, because I can't pull it up or reference it very easily.
But it was comparing reading and math to-
Okay.
So you said all students-
Ah, I guess, yes, yes, I know what you're talking about, sure. Okay, so the slide just shows Prior Lakes Savage Area Schools proficiency in reading and math compared to the other districts, yeah?
And with that, I believe, was it reading or math that was particularly near the bottom of the pack, or I can't remember?
Right, so in reading, our proficiency rate is about sixty-six percent of our students and is on the low end of our districts that are similar, that's correct.
And that was the whole, that was just Prior Lake High School, I believe, but wasn't-
No, that's all of our students, grades three through eight and then ten.
Okay. And I assume that, that working towards higher levels of proficiency will be in the long-term strategic plan then, in that area?
That's always part of what we're-
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. Then another question that I had, had to do with the areas, so when we were talking about ACT, and I, and I, just for, just general, I don't consider the MCA scores and all that, I've said this to you, but as a indicator of how well or how poor a school is doing, because to me, in my history of education, it's always been to inform the educators of what can be improved, and sometimes you can't control that population that you come into. So the cohort analysis of how much has improved is usually much more indicative of a general one-year comparison of anything. So things are going to go up and down. But when we looked at the various areas, one thing that did struck me, strike me quite a bit was not only in the review of the ACT breakdown, where reading comprehension and the general STEM area seem to be dropping, not just at Prior Lake, but also across the state, but also in the third grade, where it's so critical that that reading comprehension. Do you have any, especially state trends, do you, do you have any idea why that's occurring?
Sure, I mean, how many hours do we have? Like, I mean, I think there's a lot that goes into that. Over the past number of years, the, I think the opportunities for students and the students that we educate in Minnesota have been changing, like, as the, it's already been made clear plenty of times that the opportunity gap and then achievement gap is really big in Minnesota, and then that's compounded then by changing demographics statewide. So I think it's just revealing that-
But it dropped for both students of color as well as for whites, though, I mean, it's been, so, so is the changing demographics just the mixture?
I think that's one aspect of it, but, I mean, I guess, like, maybe that's something we could talk about more offline, or if, if the board's interested in more in-depth analysis of, like, why scores are dropping, that could be a different study session or presentation.
And then the, the last question I have, I know other people want to ask, is the, the standards for the state are changing, and that'll go into effect in a couple of years. Is there anything that you know of already that we're doing based upon the short time that you've been here, where we're making changes now in our curriculum to adjust to those changes in standards?
As the standards come out, we'll then be able to make adjustments, and the MCA lags so that there is time for the new standards to be put in place and implemented, so students have the opportunity to learn the new standards before they're tested on them. So the standards might come out one year, and then there's at least one year lag before those are tested.
But of the eighth grade standards in particular, where they want kids to be with math and science so they can start biology in freshman year, seem to be the most significant to me, and that's not something, that's something you kind of have to start back in, like, second and third grade, you can't just make the change in one year.
Right, overnight.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Jonathan?
I will echo Mary's gratitude for bringing that up and digging through it, all because, I mean, at the end of the day, this is what we're here for, right? I mean, this is the most, this might be the most meaningful meeting I feel like I've been a part of since being on the board. I have, kind of have the same question in two different ways. When you were talking about identifying root causes and working with principals in the buildings, you said analysis of the detail and the action planning. How are, how involved are our classroom teachers in that process? They're the ones who are in there. And kind of the second version of the same question, you also mentioned, you know, targeting to the needs of the teachers, how are we determining what those are?
Great. Okay, so to address your first question about the involvement of classroom teachers in root cause analysis and the skip or the school continuous improvement, improvement plan, every school has a building instructional leadership team that has representation from teachers, excuse me, that works together with the principal to make that school continuous improvement plan, and we're part of root cause analysis and either accepting or rejecting different hypotheses that might have led to that decision about what, what actions would be taken to address solutions. And then at the, on the, you know, wider front, as building instructional leadership team members talk with their learning teams, there's some more opportunity for input at that level, too. And your other question about how we are targeting needs of teachers, there is a professional leaders, or professional learning survey that teachers took that results in a profile, and so on many different measures, like maybe twenty or so, teachers let us know about if they, about, they reflected on and let us know if they felt like they were developing, if they were expert, if they were just learning about something, and so we use that at a district level and school level to help determine some of the needs of teachers and what would be the most engaging and appropriate support.
I could ask, I mean, one, Kevin, has been instrumental in leading a lot of that, meeting with a lot of, with teachers at every building during fall workshop, and part of that, and the key part of that is connecting with teachers if, to how can we best support them individually around professional learning, where are they at with their strengths, and that's going to be ongoing work. So we're, we're breaking down PD into a more personal level to try to connect with them on, on what are those areas that they need additional support in. So Kevin, if there's anything you think you want to add, or if that's something you'd like us to share at a future work session, we'd be happy to, to share that process as part of our personalized learning update. It was really, it was really quite well done.
This year, we're focusing on a few high leverage areas, including assessment for learning, knowing your standards, using learning targets, so it's kind of some of the foundational work of personalized learning and some just playing out high leverage teaching strategies, and asking teachers to really self-reflect based on competency, so not, you know, again, like Kristen said, whether they're kind of just beginning or whether they're expert and in between. And the third area is really knowing your students, so bringing in CLR, all of the faculty and knowing our kids, because, again, another key part of both personalized learning and simply student achievement, student learning. So those are the three areas in professional learning mission.
I think the other thing that I just want to make is, in addition to what everybody said, as we're looking and teachers are reflecting individually on their strengths, you know, the power of moving student learning forward is learning teams and professional learning communities, and when you've got a team together, then chances are there will be different strengths in that team as they're really focusing on those four, five essential questions that we have, you know, particularly what do we want kids to know, be able to do, which really is our standards. That's what it is, and what Kevin just spoke to is the assessment piece, which is question number two, how are we going to know? Right, so there's multiple kinds of assessment, we'll be working on assessment literacy, as well as really, how do we use these different assessments and the data from those to drive instruction and differentiation? So that really, the power of our learning teams is also that, that ability to help move student growth forward.
Just to follow up on that, and I think it's just something that I'm not quite following, so on one of the slides, you have professional learning and you have professional development in the arrow. One off, one size fits all, did it work? Those are two distinct things.
Right.
Professional development is sort of, everybody-
Want to move all of the interactions that we have with teachers to be professional learning.
Got it, so we are trying to get more specialized and individualized.
Right, we don't want, like, just a one-off thing.
It's not that we're trying to maintain both of those.
Right, no, you want to move in the other direction.
Thank you very much. Melissa, do you have any questions?
Yes, so as a summary as to what I see that we're being presented tonight with the NERSTAR report, academic achievement in both math and reading, down eight percent and six percent respectively over the last two years. MCA scores down six percent, ten percent, looking at the free and reduced slide, that was correct. It appears that, and this is where I'd like to get your take, maybe the personalized learning, the relationship building, the equity training, CLR, Dr. Sharaki Hawley, that we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on, maybe it's not cutting it with the state standards. Clearly, we've got some, some opportunity for improvement. We're not seeing that deep mastery that you cited, if we've got one in five students that, that are not meeting standards or partially, only partially meeting. So maybe we need a strategy adjustment, maybe that's required. What's really part of the action plan besides, you know, relying more on personalized learning and learning about the F-word and the S-word and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I'd love to speak to that. You know, I think, I think increased student learning and student engagement is never about just one thing, it's always about a consistent implementation and best practice over time. And, and I'm really proud of our plan and our continued work to deepen the work. I look at the work of our skips and our BILTS and what our teachers and our leaders and our staff have pulled up their sleeves and have gotten more engaged in some of that work, I think that's what shared leadership is about. And yeah, we're not seeing the results that we want to see right now. I think the road we're on with continuing to work on, on developing high functioning learning teams, with ensuring that our AGR practices are really about standards-based teaching to depth the, the standards. I think increasing our rigor and expectation, and that is about, for all of our kids, a deep belief that all kids can learn at high levels, and helping ensure that kids have the confidence to do that as well, and our, our teachers are meeting kids where they're at. They, you know, when I think about our teachers that have twenty-seven kids in a room, there might be students reading at the second grade level and students reading at a college level. And so their continued work to personalize learning, to differentiate instruction, to working with their grade level teams and their department teams to learn from each other. You know, your kids rocked it on that assessment, mine didn't do as well, what did you do? Maybe the next day or the next week, we do some flex grouping and you're helping teach some of those standards. So I definitely stand by the work that we're doing, the priority work that we're doing, that our staff are doing every single day, and I'm confident that as we keep deepening that work, those, those outcomes will change. I also think that there's a lot of other outcomes that we continue to look at, and to Kristen's point, looking at that balanced scorecard and ensuring that we're teaching high levels of rigor as, as we can tell from achieving an MCA standardized test in ACTs, and then looking at what else matters, right? We know the importance of our social emotional learning, we have some of that data from our stakeholder surveys, we'll continue to look at that. And I think there's a lot of other things in our district that I know I'm incredibly proud of, that I want to keep tracking. Eighty-five percent of our secondary, our high school students are involved in co-curriculars. I think those- I think those are important learnings. I look at our eSTEM work and we'll continue to work on and deepen that. So yeah, these outcomes aren't what anybody in this room wants right now. And I think that the work we're doing, the best practices that we're doing are aligned to other districts that right now are outperforming us. And if we continue to stay the course and keep working and keep monitoring that data, I think that's really a gift that Kristen brings to our district. And she'll continue to work with our builds and our learning teams to make sure that people really understand and are supported in using the data.
Yeah, I just, a couple of things. Yeah, I, I will say, you know, I'm a little bit saddened to see the results. I mean, I think how everyone is. You know, this isn't the reason that, you know, I hope we sit here, I'd like to see the arrow go up, obviously. And I do think over the last few years, we've really tried to build those systems in place to really have the support around that. I think I just need a little bit more detail in the sense, I think I get how this works, but just from your standpoint, you coming on as far as looking at this data, because we're going to come back here in like a year. For us, I mean, we'll look at some things, but to have this detail in a year and to ensure that these numbers go up, you know, what steps are we taking place? So we have the build teams, we have you working on them. Obviously, you're going to be looking at them quite frequently as far as the numbers. But to take it down to the level that the teacher is actually looking at their students, how much, I mean, I don't, I know we don't want to assess kids to death. But like from that standpoint, how much of an impact can we make? You know, from what you're seeing to what goes on every day in the classroom? Like, is the principal meeting on this every week? I mean, are you guys, like what, what is the rigor involved as far as it bringing it down to?
Gotcha, so what type of progress monitoring is happening and how frequently is that happening?
Yeah.
So there is a map testing that happens in grades two through eight, and that happens three times a year. So if the window just started now in the fall, it, there will be an opportunity for teachers to look at that data and principals as well, in learning teams in the middle of October or so. And then again, in the winter is when that assessment happens again. So like right before the beginning, or right around the beginning of the second semester is the next time to really look district wide at what type of progress is being made. And then use that feedback to either continue on with what we're doing because we've seen that it's successful, or notice that it wasn't as successful as we wanted. And change course to make sure that we're doing something that does give us some responses. But additionally, principals and the builds, the building instructional leadership teams have been making a schedule for what type of data they will be looking at throughout the year and presenting to staff. So more than just, I know, map scores or whatever type of universal screeners will also be looking at behavior data. So to gauge student engagement along with attendance data. So that will be something that will be presented to teachers and like at the built level. And then really, teaching teams having, use their own assessment, of course. And using those teams to make sure that the assessments that are given to students really do align with the standards. And not just that they align with the standards, but are at the rigor level that's needed for students to show mastery of that. And so learning teams have that every time that they meet and are, that's our expectation to meet. Yeah, that, that learning teams are meeting and using assessments related to standards and finding out if students are meeting those. If they're not, what do we need to do differently? If they are, what's working well and how do we replicate that?
Can I ask just a little, a little bit more on that?
Sure.
Teachers do that every single day. When you go into any of our classrooms, look into near our classrooms, you'll see that they have someplace in their room, learning targets are posted. And that's so that they're really clear on any given lesson and most importantly, students are really clear, what is the, the outcome of the day? What is the learning target? What are they going to assess them? And then somehow, usually in a pretty informal way or a formative assessment, they're doing checks every day to see how do kids do based on that learning target or those learning targets. So that cycle, teachers do every day and then bring that to one another in weekly, or learning teams. So it's daily.
Great.
And, and I liked how you said that is, is I think one of, one of the, as we've, we've been working on learning targets and demonstrations of learning is really paying attention to the rigor of those standards. And that's a place we'll continue to work.
One other comment too, just on as far as the diversity, it does seem like we're reflecting exactly what's happening at the state level. That we, you know, need, in my opinion, to put more resources there, more training, to make sure that we're meeting ELL, students of color, you know, all the specific groups. The one thing I will do a shout out on is Lola Delago. Very happy with what I've seen for those numbers. And I think that shows you that, you know, when we see something happen that needs attention, it definitely gets it and it's definitely, like that's pretty incredible if you ask me to change it in one year. So way to go.
Michael, did you make some comments?
A follow-up on a thank you too. That is a lot of data and you made it not only manageable, but interesting. And I also want to thank you for helping us understand, you know, the need to be accountable with all of this testing, but also to pull up the increased effort we're putting on social emotional and to continue to drive that board. Unfortunately, I think your video would have helped us had that frosting on the cake today. And I just want to underscore that and I'm glad as a board that we're supporting moving in that direction. I think addressing that, we'll see our scores going up as well. I will confess, I have three kids who are top test takers, but it doesn't mean that they are meeting the mission to go out into the world. And it's that social emotional piece for them that really matters in that connection. Also, as we're improving, like when we're in the classrooms and we see some of the personalized learning going on, teachers are sharing with each other, they're learning from each other. I might be in a second grade classroom where they're teaching one concept and there's five different ways that students can choose to, to explore that concept. And they master it so much better than when they're all taught exactly the same way. And I think that we need to give it a little time too, to see how those results come out because educational research will show they will master better if they're given those opportunities. And I would like to see us continue more with some of our cultural response and training. I'll just say, I was at a recent session and learning things like how to break down vocabulary and, and all kinds of different groups and how to look at subgroups. I think might take us a long way in starting to close that achievement gap, which I know is a statewide issue. And I, overall, that will make all of our scores go up. And so I just, I'd like to see that support continue to from a board point of view. So thank you for addressing that.
Any other questions?
First of all, Stacy, thank you very much for bringing up Lola Delago. I'm very happy to see those scores go up. I think there was a lot of lessons learned there also, and I hope that we can capitalize on that. But I want to make a couple of statements about that too. First of all, it's an incredible program that we have there and, and we don't want to lose it, okay? We want it to continue to grow. But the, the effort was really a community effort to bring that up because a lot, you know, we're dealing with students in that area where the parents are very invested in their education. And they, they specifically chose immersion, so they did tutor their kids and, and everything like that to help with that. And hoping that what's been going on can, can be, you know, continued. The other thing that I want to say about Lola Delago is one of the things that, that was a little concerning to me is the comparisons for all of Prior Lake were, you know, and at first, it, you know, we talked earlier and you showed me how the, the demographics were somewhat similar in the various areas. But the demographics for the Spanish immersion in those schools are the same too. So like there's Cape Town and, and in Wayzata and Edina, there's, you know, Rochester, there's the, the rest of the Minnetoka, there's Park Immersion, stuff like that. Just wondering, why didn't we compare that particular group? Particularly since we're so new and we have so much to learn in that area.
Actually, I did compare all of those. I have a spreadsheet and in fact, I have like nine million spreadsheets. But I, in the end, I chose programs that were, that had students that were demographically similar. That was what I went for in the first scoop.
Okay.
So if you're interested in seeing that, like I'm happy to share those too.
Yeah, I, I personally, you know, don't know much about the demographics of some of these schools. I do know about Clearview and Wake Park and the lakes and Forest Lake. And I wasn't familiar with, I, I did not believe their demographics were the same, but I will, I'd love to see the data.
They're the, the most similar of the immersion programs.
You mentioned map testing.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that this is the world, world's best workforce and we're focusing on the MCAs. Are we going to do the same type of thing with the map test results over the years, et cetera? Is the board going to get a chance to see that?
I think a really great place in time to see some map scores would be like at a mid-year update.
Okay.
Sounds like a great, great place that we know where we're going.
Great. And then I have one other thing that, you know, we're, our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. And when we talk about this, you know, continuous improvement update, that's really great. But where, is there a line that we should be more cognizant of, of where they're going into these meetings and these constant reviews of the data versus spending the time in the classroom? Because when I hear all these things, I think they're really, really good in keeping those standards up there and talking about them and learning about them. But when we're dealing with personalized learning, that almost seems, almost counterintuitive to say, okay, we want them also one-on-one with the kids and, and helping them develop that personalized learning plan. And at the same time, we're, we're in all these different engagements and processes and their own assessments upon each other and things like that. Could we, I would, and I know that you're still new, but I, I'd love to hear at some point in time, where do you draw that happy medium where it's, where we're really capitalizing on the amount of time that they spend with the students?
I don't think those things are mutually exclusive at all. And like learning teams are a proven really powerful, high leverage place where teachers have a professional learning community and learn, learn and support each other. So that happens in addition to all the time that they're with students.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, teachers aren't, teachers aren't losing time with students in order to be a part of a professional learning community.
And one of the things I had asked, because I've heard that state of concern, so I asked all of the, especially about morning meetings and how many morning meetings there are a week for, for teachers. So one of the things I asked is all of the elementary principals to give me literally a month calendar. Literally a month calendar of when all their meetings are and the initials of those staff that are in meetings, like on Tuesday, Thursday, to look and see, you know, how many teachers are involved in that. And there might be places that we have to look and say, you know what? We've got a teacher who's involved in these two things, maybe they shouldn't be on these. Because to Kristen's point, learning teams is the most powerful lever that we have. So that's, that's a weekly meeting that's going to remain sacred. And teachers want to and we need them to be a part of PBIS groups and builds and PST teams, problem solving teams. But maybe as the principals do need to look at that with their staff to say, do we have some people that are just doing so much? That they don't have some of the time that they might want to have, you know, like you said, prepping, being ready? And are there other people that haven't been asked yet? That would also be good, you know, to really share that leadership and share those opportunities. So that is something I'm looking at with elementary principals.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I won't repeat a lot of the things that other board members said, which I agree with. I appreciate getting all this information and having a chance to speak with you earlier. And I also appreciate that when the question was asked about testing, that we're not waiting for the test result to find out whether the child is progressing or not. That it is behavioral, it does have to do with attendance, and there's a, a lot of reasons. And I want to give the teachers credit that when they're teaching their children, they see that this child is not getting it or not understanding it rather than waiting until some state test tells them they're not. I would hate to think that would happen. I don't believe it does. I think our teachers are smart enough to figure that out. I think that this whole way of learning is a process. It's not one-size-fits-all. And it's going to take time. I mean, we want personalized learning. We want to meet every, every child where they're at and get them to progress further. And everyone's going to progress differently. It's not the way we went to school where here's the, here's the activity and you figure it out and you better all succeed at it and figure out how you're going to do that. So it is a process. I think it's going to take some time. From what you presented tonight and what we're doing, I've heard this before, but not that long ago. So it does take some time. So that's where I expect that there'll be some change going forward to improve on it. I'll echo that I'm not thrilled about these scores. I don't think any of us are, is what everyone's said. And I do expect that they'll, they'll get better. And I did like one of your comments that with the professional learning communities, that teachers need the tools to be able to get the kids to learn better. So they do need to take that time away from boring and together.
Have time set aside for that.
You know, to, to teach kids. So I, I'm kind of excited about what's coming. I'm kind of glad we had a little bit of a wake-up call. You know, let's, let's get going, let's raise those standards and those expectations. And I don't believe just because a kid's on free reduced lunch or they're of color that they can't learn and they can't be as smart as anybody else. So that's where we need to make sure our teachers have the right tools to teach those kids as well. I think that's my summary for it. Appreciate all your work and I think we'll move on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, facilities, planning and construction.
I have to be upfront. I'm not going to share quite as much data.
People are crying.
I was afraid of what you were going to say because I really wasn't following.
So construction is moving on. We are at Redtail Ridge and Jeffers Pond. We are basically, we were operational and we're in and there's minor things at every single site, but those, those sites are open and they're doing really well. The high school, we did get through an issue we had with the parking lot. We discussed it at the last FLIR meeting where we, we added Portland cement to the parking lot and that was completed this last weekend. We had a little bit of rain and it's working exactly.
It's poor, it's altered? There's a parking lot there?
No, we're very close to the park. We're getting closer by the day.
I wasn't jumping at that party yet.
So what we did is we added Portland to the, to the base and it'll help stabilize it.
So firm it up.
Firm it up, yep. And it worked.
Oh.
So gravel, I think on Wednesday and herbs are going in and hopefully with good weather and.
The weekend, right? And is that when we're doing it? Or when, I mean, can you do it during the school?
Yeah, we could do it during school.
Oh, because summer term when you.
Yep.
Nobody's parked there.
Hey, thanks for reminding me.
Pointing out the obvious.
And then another big visible piece is the activity center. The planks are going up, the walls. It's exciting, there's a lot of work going on there. Bridges ALC, again, that's open and minor things to finish there. Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks, we, we're up out of the ground at Twin Oaks now in that back section. We, you know, we run into problems there left and right. There's a lot of stuff back behind the building there. Working with this, Dr. Edwards and Sasha, making access for kids so that they can get outside and utilize our, our spaces outside. And we started design, or actually, we're two-thirds of the way through design for Grainwood Elementary, our next project. Primarily mechanical upgrade and, and some refreshing. It's, you know, another tired building and it needs some help.
Is that next one?
That would be next one, yep. And Hamilton Ridge is moving right along too.
Any other questions? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Glad you had a go on.
Yes.
And we'll move on to Minnesota High School League Cooperative Request. Activities Director Rees.
So I, I want to go quickly unless you have questions, but a formal request from Shakapi was brought. But, uh, a formal request from Shakopee, uh, was brought forward to co-op in gymnastics. And this process has changed a bit since the last time a co-op was presented to you. The State High School League, um, re, basically wiped out all current co-ops. So any resolution that we had was, was wiped clean and all new co-ops need to be brought forward. And, you know, as long as the conference, the region and the, the school boards agree, the co-op stays in place then until it's dissolved, which is another formal board action. So what I wanted to just discuss quickly is, um, what co-ops really mean for us and in the process that's taken place so far. So, uh, when a request is made, the first thing we, as A Ds do is go to our conference, uh, athletic directors. So that's the South Suburban Conference, the nine other schools. And we need two-thirds majority vote from them to proceed. And in this case, because Apple Valley and Eastview co-op in gymnastics, they approved it. It's, there's been a lot that never make it past that, that initial vote. We're obviously Prior Lake and Shakopee are two very large schools. So the next step is we ask the section athletic directors for approval. And they need two-thirds approval before it gets brought to the school board. So in this particular case, the section has also approved. They, at this time, don't see a competitive advantage for Shakopee and Prior Lake to join for gymnastics. That's also really difficult to get passed. Usually it wouldn't get past that part, depending on the sport. Um, you can see our numbers here at number four. We've got about twenty athletes. Um, I didn't, I don't know which, we didn't have any seventh graders last year, so I, I'm not certain, uh, how many seventh and eighth graders will have tryout for this year's team. But we have twenty. Shakopee has three athletes that are interested in joining. The way the, the finances work, we look at total cost to provide the program. So that would be coaching, transportation, officials, um, uniforms, our supply budget. We divide it by total number of participants and we charge Shakopee for their fair share, based on number of athletes participating. So it's not just Shakopee paying our fees. It's really, what is the total cost of the program divided by the number of participants and then they would pay that. We would be known as Prior Lake Shakopee. We'd be blue and gold. Our team mascot would be the Lakers. We are the host school. Uh, they would practice at our facility. We would not pay for or provide any transportation to and from practice. And if they're traveling to a meet, they have to travel to our facility first then to get to that meet. And then they're dropped back at our facility. So tonight, uh, Shakopee School Board approved their, their part in this. And so it would come to us officially next week. But I just wanted to answer any questions, as this is really the first official co-op we've had come in front of the board since I've been here. It's been about four years since we've had one. Thoughts? Mary?
Well, obviously with only three joining us from Shakopee, that, that's, I could understand why they don't believe that's a competitive advantage. But now Shakopee had their own coaches and stuff. Are they going to be helping out and, and sharing in that responsibility with Prior Lake? So we don't have to hire more?
Right. They've never had a gymnastics program there.
Oh, okay.
So the idea behind co-ops and what they'll need to submit to the high school league, once it gets past the two boards, is how they're working towards providing this in their own district down the road. So they're hoping that this is what grows the gymnastics program. We get a few kids involved this year and then as it, as they, as we outgrow, we can only really accommodate about thirty gymnasts in our gym. And we've got twenty already and if, if they have three, we're at twenty-three. But when we get to a point where it's too large, we dissolve. And then we are hoping by then that they've got their own program going. But right, right now, they don't have anything.
When we would get to that point, would that come to the board or that should be an FYI that we dissolve?
Yeah, we're gonna have an official, there, that's the, the new piece to all of this, is there's a, official dissolution of, uh, co-op agreement. So that would come back to you then and we'd say, we're just no longer able to provide this service. We've grown too much. If, if I get word that, um, you know, we've got thirty gymnasts that are Prior Lake, um, then we would move to dissolve and Shakopee would be on their own again. Here's where I see the rub, um, and this is just so you, you're all aware before anybody votes. If these three gymnasts from Shakopee are really good, then they compete varsity instead of Prior Lake athletes. And when that happens, then there could be parents that are not happy with the decision to allow Shakopee students on. I mean, that's really how it works. I don't see a financial, um, issue with allowing it to happen. We've got the room, we've got the facilities. The burden is really on them to get here. It's more of, do we wanna open this up to non-resident students to compete for our teams?
Well, that was my question. Cause this has come up before when we had a single student come from Jordan or wherever for whatever sport it was. I can't remember it right now. Uh, and that was a concern that parents may have. Do the parents have any input in this decision, except to send us an email?
Well, this, so this started with Shakopee parents looking for a place for their girls to compete. And so they've been kinda knocking on Shakopee's door for a while, saying, can we get a co-op agreement in place? You know, as activity directors, we're trying to find opportunities for kids. So I, I understand where Matt Hatson's coming from at Shakopee. They're not in a position to provide the program. So, you know, could it, could it work out well for us? The, the only disadvantage would be if they're taking spots away from our, our kids. And I have no way of knowing if they're any good, right? If they, if that would happen.
Well, that, that wouldn't even be fair.
Right.
If you're not any good, you can come and punch us.
Right. It's really just a matter of, are we okay with it for now, being that there's only three? Now, that being said, word could get back to Shakopee after tonight that the co-op's gonna get approved. And then we have seven girls that wanna do it, so, um.
So.
It's hard to know.
Yeah, for the timing standpoint, I mean, since we're at twenty and you said we have about thirty, you know, I, when does this, like, registration happen soon?
Uh, we open registration the first of October.
So if by chance we get, and we, let's say we've approved it, then we can rename quickly to say that.
We, any decision would need to be made thirty days before the start of the season, which is, I think, the second week of November. November fourteenth, somewhere around there. So, so to that point, um, these numbers are accurate for us right now.
Yeah.
What I don't know and what we can research, if I could, I, I would ask our head coach to, to try to figure out, what do you think is gonna happen with our own seventh and eighth graders? Um, if they decide to join us. And that's why I wanted, that's why I want you all to think about it for a week before, or two weeks. When's our next board meeting?
October fourteenth.
It's three. It's October fourteenth. Fourteenth, so they're a date.
Russ, do they pay our activity fee?
We would bill, we'd invoice them for total cost per athlete.
But do they pay our activity fee to participate?
They'd pay a Shakopee activity fee. And then our district would invoice their district for cost per athlete.
So I would assume the math there comes out in our favor. They're paying, they're, you know, that proportion of the total cost of the program exceeds our participation fee.
By quite a bit.
Yeah.
I would guess they're gonna pay somewhere around eight hundred dollars per participant to be a part of our gymnastics program. And that's why their board had to be.
It's not the delta between the two that they will.
No.
Russ, what's our history? Uh, how's, is this a typical size for our gymnastics team and distribution or what's happened in the past?
Yeah, we've, we're bigger than we've been in the past. We've always been somewhere be, in the teens, somewhere between thirteen and nineteen athletes. Um, this is the first time where I'm projecting over twenty athletes joining. So what's, you know, our best gymnasts don't always go out for the high school team. Many of them are competitive in club and so it's hard to say year to year how many will come, join the high school program. So I'm not sure. The history of co-ops, we, we've co-opted in the past with Jordan for swim and dive and with New Prague for Nordic skiing. I don't know that we've co-opted with any, any schools for any other programs.
And those are individuals, I remember, right?
They were.
Um, what about the, you know, say we have some seventh and eighth graders. I know that you don't have any numbers for them right now, but, um, because of the nature of this kind of sport, a lot of times seventh, eighth graders can be very competitive at the high school level. So do we know of them or if they come in, then we would also maybe dissolve the Shakopee?
All we know is who we had with us this summer. And so as of right now, unless kids are in seventh and eighth grade that are gonna leave the club and come to us, we don't know of any. But that's something that I would have our head coach look into and say, is there any?
Yeah, but it wouldn't matter if they were seventh or eighth graders, just cause they're not at the high school. Those seventh and eighth graders could move on, move out, but Shakopee kids, if that's what happened, otherwise, okay.
So we, for this first year, if we approved this, we would have to limit registration to thirty, right? So if, if some, if, and we would look obviously for, get our Prior Lake kids registered. Um, if we hit that mark, we're gonna have to tell Shakopee athletes that they wouldn't be able to participate. We can't exceed thirty. I don't believe that we will, but Shakopee will be collecting registrations on their end for those kids that are interested. And if we hit our ceiling, we'll have to, we, we'll have to make arrangements to.
Well, so like if we have twenty-six and then there's four spots and they have eight sign up, would we, could let the four in and not the other?
There'd be a.
Yes or no?
Yeah, so there'd be a tryout at that point and the, the hard part is, um, per the agreement, what I would need to figure out is are we, we, I don't wanna be in a situation where we end up cutting Prior Lake kids to accommodate Shakopee kids. So that's what we need to be really careful with. And, you know, those are things that I think you all consider in the next few weeks before we, we come to decision on voting.
When did you say the registration was?
Uh, we open winter registration October first. They have until mid-November to get registered. I mean, they register the night before anyway, but, but in this particular case, we would be very finite on who's registering and how many we're gonna have. So we'd keep that dialogue open with Shakopee. There's a lot of hurdles to go over and so, um, you know, we've cleared two of them already, or Shakopee, I should say, has cleared two of them already. Three of them now with their own board and the fee that they're gonna pay. It's really, this would be the last hurdle and then we would submit it to the State High School League, so.
So it would go without saying that you've let us know what those numbers are before we have our meeting?
Yes. And so I think what I'll do is be in correspondent with you, uh, over the next two weeks and then present formally. Or if we, if we figure out that this isn't gonna work, then I, then I tell Shakopee we're not even gonna bring it forward, cause we've got too many athletes interested. But it is something you can dissolve after one season, if we don't like the way it works. Um, and it's also something that would be in place if we do think that it's, it's good for both parties.
So what you would need tonight is direction to, to do any, to, to pursue those numbers and that information? And, or unless you would say right now, board, that you're not even interested enough for him to spend time on that. How's the board feeling?
Personally, I think anytime that there's a risk of our students being at a deficit for something like this in an organizational sport, I wouldn't even be interested in entertaining it. The idea of co-ops, I mean, the State High School League is dissolving them for a reason. And it sounds like Shakopee's everything to gain and we have everything to lose. That's kinda where I stand. I'd say no.
And I, I think co-ops are really good for smaller schools.
Right.
Right? And that's why the league has co-op bylaws in place, because they wanna give kids opportunities from smaller schools to, to come together and have a team. But to your point, we are a rather large school. We do have good numbers in gymnastics. We don't need to provide it. But I also know that we've got three athletes in Shakopee that right now don't have a place to compete. So that's, that's sort of the catch-22.
Can I ask one question? Just as far as the availability, gymnastics have high schools around us? I mean, does, I know it's like a sport that not everybody does.
Right.
Limits. I mean, does Jordan have a, or you know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of other places for the Shakopee kids to go.
Jordan does not. Uh, Eden Prairie does.
Yeah, they go to Prairie.
Yep. Um, it's, it's difficult outside of a conference to get the co-op approved. So the reason our conference is approving it is cause it's two South Suburban schools. But do they have other choices? Absolutely. Right now Chaska Chan is a co-op for gymnastics. You know, we've got, New Prague has a really robust program. Um, so there's other ways for them to, to attempt a co-op if we decide not to.
I was just going to ask, I'm trying to read between the lines and I can see the wa, the waffling. Is it fair to ask you, if you lean one way or the other based on your experience, or does that put you in a bad spot? Because I know your mission to get kids involved and get them connected. And I know your commitment to our district, so I'm finding a hard time blocking that line as well.
Yeah, I, there's, to me, I don't see a distinct advantage to Prior Lake schools to offer the co-op.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think it would be, it's, it's great to be a good neighbor and it's great to provide an opportunity for, for students if we can. I think there should be a need on both sides to co-op, right? If we were, if we were hurting to keep a program established, that's really where it makes sense to say, okay, you've got kids, we need kids, let's do this together. But the request was very much on Shakopee's end. Good question.
Thank you for that.
Mine was basically the same.
Same.
Question.
Okay.
So we just answer.
So where do you stand?
So where do I stand? Can I go first?
Based on Russ's recommendation, I don't know if we need to pursue it at this time. Where I was struggling again was there's three kids somewhere whom we need a program, right? And how we balance that with our mission within our district. So I'm, I'm looking to him as a leader to tip his hat, and I think he just did, but your turn.
L- largely the same response. Well, I was liter, I was literally just gonna say, what's your opinion?
Yeah.
Similar.
I- i- if I could, there's, there'll be another request and it is for adapted athletics, where we definitely have a need. Because of our numbers versus Chaska Chan and Shakopee. So I, I, I do think in some ways it will make sense for that one. You know, whether or not, you know, I think it's really good discussion and because as more requests come in down the road, typi, Jordan and New Prague are typically very active in trying to get, um, some co-op agreements done. Uh, at least I will know sort of how everyone's feeling. So the discussion is good.
Um, you know, for one season, um, and it brings in money. And as long as it, you know, I mean, as long as we set the cap and it doesn't eliminate Prior Lake students, uh, considering the history of the numbers you said, I see no reason not to do it for at least one season and see how things go. Uh, I would imagine that as it ramps up and Shakopee gets more and, um, who knows what's gonna happen on our side. It'd be a good test. As far as adaptive P E, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's obviously a benefit. That's not an issue, but if we, we have the space, and again, it brings in the money, um, and they're responsible for the transportation here. You know, I, I see no reason to try it for one season. As long as they're aware of our limits, they're aware of our, um, requirements. And, um, do we do anything? I mean, I know there's camps and stuff like that. You have pretty, you said you're pretty solid with the numbers here, so you know the progression of students coming up through this program. Before we go into next year's season, you would be able to tell Shakopee probably we can or we can't, right? Particularly with their interest level.
Yes and no. So in this particular sport, there's really no youth feeder program. They're all in clubs all over the metro. Um, so what do we have? It is. We have, we have a summer program for returning athletes. And if they're on the team the previous year, they're engaged all summer. They are engaged in the fall, so we have, so that's why these numbers nine through twelve are so solid. Where we are, you know, well, we might have some eighth graders come out this year for the first time and then they're in that nine through twelve cycle, which we know likely will be back. But would we know enough in advance to dissolve? We would.
Okay, and that's.
I'm confident we would.
I see no risk in doing it for one season. Um, especially like I said, if it brings in money and, and it's not gonna hurt Prior Lake. Just as long as the, the, the rules of engagement are very clear with Shakopee going into next season and, and further out. Uh, we may run into a situation, we drop some kids and this affects the overall program. We don't, we don't know that, but right now if it's not hurting anything and it brings in the money, I'm, I'm good.
And I don't see it hurting necessarily anything.
And we could, um, dissolve this for any reason, not just a certain number. I mean, we're not held to that.
Right. Yep.
Well, it's leading one way that is no, that's not, but by the way. From last year.
What if they're part, what if these three are varsity?
I know, that, that is really the only, that's.
And then you've got those parents.
That's the risk right there, really. That's the only risk that hurts Prior Lake. Um, but I, I'm kinda with Mary on this. I think for one year, you know, we can use rather, I know, so. I see, correct. Go ahead.
And again, you're not voting tonight.
No, I would just say go ahead and give direction to bring it forward. Uh, that's all I wanna know. Because we could still say.
We can still, yeah.
Knowing, once the numbers, he's already gonna have registration and everything, we'll get a clear view there, I don't know. I don't see why not.
I'm not closed, so, I mean.
Well, we just wanna know whether we should tell him, go ahead and pursue it, or don't waste your time.
Well, I think what I hear is there's an openness to still consider from, from probably the majority of the board. I don't know where we are.
Okay.
I didn't get to talk yet, no kidding. Um, and I do believe in being a good neighbor, and I do believe that, um, when we had the single kids come into the district, it all went pretty well from what I remember. But granted, that was one kid, whatever. I would like to see us go forward with this, but I also would like to know what those numbers are. So, to play this scenario out until closer to our meeting or when we have our meeting, or if it happens sooner than our numbers are getting too big to let us know, keep us up to date. So, I would encourage you to continue pursuing this, is my opinion. So, we're kinda three and three, but Jonathan, you're kinda on the fence, so. Go for it.
So, what I would like to do, um, the one number that alarms me a little bit is the nine juniors, right? So, um, you've, if you have younger, if you have kids in younger grade levels that have opportunities to compete at varsity later on, you feel a little better about it. If, if they, if these three come in and display some of those juniors that never get a chance.
How big's the varsity group on gymnastics?
They, there's, uh, four, so you have beam, bars, floor, beam, bars, floor, and vault. And they compete four in each.
Sixteen, well, technically sixteen, that's kind of.
He's an all-around individual and then as a team.
And some do, some do the all-around, and so they're competing in all, you might have one athlete that only does one of the events, so. There's definitely opportunity for, for athletes to be involved. We do fill to a full JV rotation and a full varsity rotation, so there's gonna be ways to get everybody involved, even with the larger team.
Do you have students know that, let's say, compete varsity on the beam, but then JV on other stuff, just because of their specialty, or is that allowed?
I haven't seen it, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I don't think it's allowed, I think if you're varsity in one event, you're not able to compete JV in three others.
Because when I was in gymnastics, I could compete varsity, let's say, on, on bars, and then I would be in JV on all-around just because of where my standings were, so I would always go into the varsity meets just on one.
Sure.
Until I moved up, so.
Yeah, it's hard to say, I, I wish I knew the answer to that question, but.
So, I'm hearing this direction to, for him to continue to learn more, um, provide information to you, and we'll see if anything changes, otherwise it will be on the agenda for October fourteenth.
Sounds great.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Russell.
Thanks, Russ.
Moving on to policy, this is the first reading of a couple policies, or?
Yes. Good evening again. Um, so, we looked at formatting policy seven oh seven, uh, transportation public school students. Uh, we looked at our policy in MSBA, basically MSBA, and are matched in a lot of ways. So, we adopted MSBA policy for, uh, um, policy seven oh seven. In policy seven oh eight, we really had no changes other than, um, the adoption date, or that we would change if we were to, um, adopt these policies. So, no change in our seven oh eight, and, and truly no changes in our, um, seven oh seven, but it matches MSBA, um, their policy lined up better. And also, uh, during the year, as, last couple of years, we were to report which, um, turn lanes we were turning in for, um, with the embers. We had new guidance from state patrol. We're okay now to do stop arms in a turn lane. So, we have none of those anymore. At every turn lane, we're, our reds were on stop arms and.
Thank you, good.
Yep.
I didn't like what we did last year, that is very related, I see the kids running now, yeah. Jim, I apologize that I didn't get this question to you earlier, and you may not know that answer right now, but in our K five, we're asking these students to walk up to a mile. Do we have a lot of kids that have to do that?
Uh, no, if you remember, we've relaxed, um, our walking distance at Glendale, Jeffers, and with all the hazards we have in this community, we don't have a ton for Westwood, I mean, there are some, but it's not a ton.
Okay. There's not many that are walking. I didn't think there was, but I wanted.
I think we have, she's at Glendale in particular that we discussed before, right?
Yeah, Glendale, we relaxed just because of congestion, Jeffers, same.
Okay.
Jim, I do have a really quick question, if that's okay? Please, um, being, um, formerly part of the Southwest Metro, I know that they've come under some issues with, uh, the busing of their people, non, um, resident, non-resident, and stuff like that in, in like, uh, some of the programs that they've had. And I wasn't sure if, if that affects us, so for instance, they had, uh, some, um, um, girls in their transitions program that were going to their version of the ALC, jumping on the regular buses, and they were told by the state, you can't do that, because as soon as one person that's not part of that program, like a sped program or a special program does that, then we don't, we won't give you reimbursement for that transportation. And so, um, I know that that was a, a legislative issue that I don't believe passed this year.
Okay.
Um, is, have you had anything like that happen here with, let's say, um, anybody, uh, needing transportation that wasn't technically asking for permission or on that particular transportation route that caused issues?
Not that I'm aware of, um, no, we're pretty liberal in our interpretation, who gets the ride.
I do know that if that happens, you, you don't get, you, you still get reimbursement, but you have to divide it by the number of kids. So, if you have a regular on, if you were a special ed student, and a reg ed student gets on the bus, and it's just two kids, now it's fifty-fifty, fifty percent special ed instead of a hundred percent special ed, so.
I'm not sure how they resolved that, I know it was pretty serious for them, and I was not sure, do, I mean, do we have to hand in those logs? I mean, you said we're pretty liberal, it.
We don't really have that unless they require special transportation, and so usually they're going to a special place.
Okay.
So, that's the only time that it's any different for us.
So, it doesn't impact, does it? Okay.
So, and I can give you one example, so we have three-year-olds, um, that will transport, even though we're not obligated to, but we have rules set up that it has to be a sibling onboard with the three-year-old, and they take control of, um, of the child to make sure they get to and from, and if the sibling doesn't ride, we won't ride the three-year-old along. So, that's one example of some of the ways we operate for transportation.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Okay, um, this was the first reading, these will come back at our meeting on, in October, please. Do you have any superintendent?
We do have one other, uh, uh, transportation.
Oh.
That we wanna talk about?
Elementary?
Yeah.
Yep. So, as, as we went through boundary changes, um, Redtail, I'm sorry, Greenwood and Five Box, because they're so large in rule, they were the mid-start elementaries or early start elementaries. So, we're proposing that Redtail and Five Box become the ones for next year's boundary changes.
For an early start?
For the earlys.
Early, the first year?
Correct.
So, we have two, two elementaries that start earlier than.
At eight-thirty.
And who are they currently?
Currently, it's, uh, Five Box and Greenwood.
Five Box and Greenwood.
And now it's going to be Redtail.
Redtail and Five Box, just, and again, it's just based on the geographical size, and how rule those, we just need more, uh, time.
More time to go.
Yep.
And the reason that was one of the, the, um, decisions that we wanna make earlier rather than later, because staff will be starting to let, to provide input into, uh, their, uh, their options for next year, and that's one of, we've heard from staff, that's, that's one of the factors that they use, um, in determining where they'll wanna be. So, that was a decision we needed to make prior to, um, the staff starting to have that input. And the rationale again is the large, they're the largest proximity of the boundary area, yeah.
What time is it really?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty. And this was like, sorry. The other one's like nine.
Nine, ten-one, nine-twenty.
And this was discussed, it was briefly.
Yep, correct, yeah.
Do you have a, um, an overall plan, because I know we turn buses, we pick up middle school and use the same bus, et cetera. And, and, you know, and middle school parents have always, especially in my area, have complained quite a bit that that six forty-five pickup is incredibly hard. Do we, is, this is the only thing that's changing, we're not looking at modifying any of the routes or trying to relieve?
Uh, we look at routes annually, but we had, we did not look at any other start times. This was elementary, uh, boundaries, and that's what's riding, that's change.
And that is then dependent upon the turn of the buses between the elementary and the school.
To be efficient, that's why we have the tiers.
That's three rounds.
That's why I'm looking at how.
Three tiers, yep.
Yeah, three tiers, yeah.
So, the other, other elementaries start at what time?
Nine-twenty, I believe.
Nine-twenty, okay. I may have some extra questions for you, not here.
Okay.
And I think there was a possibility of some flexibility with the Westwood, uh, Olavilago.
Yep.
They, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we are working on trying to figure out how to keep them on the third tier, otherwise if we can't figure that out with the equipment we have, we may have to stagger Olavilago's start time different to allow for transfer of students, um, you know, because it's a district-wide route for Sage, Westwood and Olavilago, and if we, you know, to be efficient, we wanna continue that, uh, we would need time, you know, to get the students, drop them at Westwood and then get them over to Olavilago, and that difference would be fifteen minutes. We're, we're trying to avoid that.
Yeah. So, this is, um, Mary's question, had we, um, had we done a fuller, uh, change in start times, um, that we obviously would need for direction to do that first of all, and then board approval. Um, with this change, this wouldn't be something that we see that we would need board approval for. Um, we're just changing the, the, because of the proximity rationale, just making that decision as management, I don't wanna make sure that that's.
We're changing the buildings, not the start times.
Correct, correct.
For the funding, yeah. However, I would request that when it's all decided and if we're making transfers and things, that we would get that, that information.
Sure. Absolutely.
So, just so you know, we will also start communicating this, because I know there are teachers and parents who, so we'll start, we wanted tonight to, to happen, but then we'll plan on, I think Christie, uh, has a, a staff and parent newsletter, um, actually, that was gonna go out last Friday. I asked her to hold to see what happened here, so I think that this week, uh, she'll be, uh, communicating that. So, again, really, the, the urgency for us was to make sure staff knew that decision before they were providing input.
Thank you. That was the policy discussion? Transportation policy decision, okay.
Yeah, that was part of the.
Superintendent relation? I don't believe there's any other informational items at this time that I'm aware of. And I have no one that signed up for public forum, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on something that we've discussed tonight? Seeing no one. We will adjourn the study session.